Good morning. We'll call to order, thank you, somebody responded. Good morning. Welcome. We'll call to order the September 25th, 2025 meeting of Montgomery County Board. All three of us present. I will ask our clerk of courts to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, a couple of announcements today. I'll just start. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of being at a few different events around the county, from Ardmore up to Greenland, Red Hill and East Greenville for our Monaco 2040 grant program. And Ardmore separately was for groundbreaking of a new housing development, which is the senior home of Ardmore House Two. It will feature 60 modern apartments designed for seniors with accessibility and comfort in mind. It's an affordable housing project developed by Human Good in collaboration with Lower Mary Township. We had funding from the state, from the locality and the county invested $5 million in this. It was really an exciting day because, you know, the cost of housing is a major issue facing everyone across the county and we were able to work to secure over $13 million in a state tax credit, the LIHTAC program for this, addition of five from the county and I think around two from Lower Mary Township. We also had a number of investments, as I said, in our Monaco 2040 grant program and a planning commission for all the work they do. We shared with East Greenville a check in our investment in a new park here called Action Park. It's going to create a trail around the playground, there's a basketball court. And for those of you who don't know about Action Park, it's my new favorite park in the county because it smells like chocolate. The Blommer Chocolate Factory is right next to the park. And so while you're playing basketball, you will be distracted by the smell of chocolate. And I'm like, I don't know, I would love to have fun with that. But, um, yes.
I don't like chocolate. Yeah, so that, but it was the smell of vanilla. I'm a vanilla.
Alright.
What is white chocolate?
No, not even white chocolate.
You don't like that either?
Nope. Go buy me chocolates for round.
Well, now I have to cancel my order.
Sorry, I mean it.
I always go directly towards those.
There we go.
But, uh, we need a vanilla fact, competing part with a vanilla factory. So anyway, that's Action Park. We invested in U Trail there. There's also the Upper Perk Library where we invested in motorized blinds. Very sunny library. It's actually an old cigar factory that they turned into a library in Upper Perk. And librarians were thrilled to have that. They do a lot of great activities for people of all ages in the library. And in Greenland, we also cut a ribbon from the PA Highlands Trail connection, which is going to make it easier for people to get around via sidewalk to the trails. And there's also the Borough 150th anniversary, which was a nice celebration. So, and all three of us are going to be out there with different Monaco 2040 grants around the county, so stay tuned. It's one of my favorite programs in the county because we get to work directly from municipalities and nonprofits and I help them achieve goals, whether it's transportation, sustainability and infrastructure. So it's also Veteran Suicide Prevention Month and, or Suicide Prevention Month. And specifically, we wanted to acknowledge some of the work being done to prevent suicides among veterans. And this Friday at noon, we'll be hosting a flag raising outside the courthouse to remember veterans who have lost their lives to suicide. Approximately 17 American veterans take their own lives every day. One is too many. And Monaco, we were proud to establish the Veterans Crisis Response Team in PA in 2022. Since its inception, the team has responded to over 150 calls, prevented numerous suicides from happening. We also have taken a proactive approach here to ensure that we come together with all of our partners and we created a task force. Tomorrow, the task force and Representative Joe Webster will be having a special flag raising in honor of that. That's, you know, what I mentioned. So they'll be hosting that. So today, we wanted to present a proclamation to Charday Westcott, who's the chair of the task force. She's a community engagement partnership coordinator with the US VA and brings multiple experience to the work. We're so grateful for her leadership in leading our task force and so I wanted to bring her up.
I'm here.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up and present you this.
Oh, okay. Hello. Thank you. I actually had a proclamation to read from after listening.
Oh, wow. You trade proclamations.
Okay. Okay, take a quick photo first.
Alright, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you. It's very smart.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for the proclamation and acknowledgement for veteran suicide. Again, my name is Charday Westcott. I am the Community Engagement and Partnership Coordinator for Suicide Prevention at the Coltsville VA Medical Center. I'm responsible for developing partnerships and coalitions for community-based interventions for suicide prevention. I did not serve in the military, but I do come from a large military family. My mom, 20 years Air Force, two of my brothers, one who I'm wearing on my chest, and five of my uncles served in the military. And I would just like to read the proclamation from Representative Joe Webster. So, proclamation, House of Representatives, Montgomery County, House delegation. Whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania honors and respects the service and sacrifice of veterans who have bravely defended our nation and its freedoms. And whereas there are over 600,000 veterans residing in Pennsylvania, each of whom has earned our deepest gratitude and unwavering support. And whereas the well-being of our veterans is of paramount importance, yet tragically, veteran suicide remains a serious public health issue with an estimated 17 veterans across the United States dying by suicide each year. And whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is committed to raising awareness about veteran suicide and ensuring that our veterans have access to mental health resources, support systems and community programs they need to thrive. And whereas Pennsylvania provides a variety of services to support veterans, including the Montgomery County Crisis Line, which is available 24/7 at 988 and offers confidential assistance to veterans in crisis. And whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veteran Affairs, DMBA, offers programs such as the Veterans Trust Fund, which provides funding for essential services, and the Veterans Outreach Group, which connects veterans with local resources. And whereas the state's network of county directors of veteran affairs ensures that veterans receive the benefits and services they are entitled to and that they are connected to mental health and suicide prevention resources. And whereas it is vital for communities across Pennsylvania to come together in support of our veterans to encourage open conversations about mental health and to eliminate the stigma associated with seeking help. And whereas veteran suicide prevention week serves as a time to educate, advocate and extend our hand to those who have given so much, ensuring that no veteran feels alone or without hope. Therefore, on behalf of Representative Joe Webster, Chair of the Montgomery County Delegation of Pennsylvania House of Representatives, along with each member of the delegation, do hereby recognize the week of September 25th to October 2nd as Veteran Suicide Prevention Week. And in his words, "I urge all citizens, businesses and organizations to join in this important observance by raising awareness, supporting our veterans and promoting mental health and well-being throughout our communities." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. So lastly, before I turn it over to my colleagues, Rosh Hashanah is early this week. We're celebrating the beginning of the New Year on the Jewish religious calendar. And we have 100,000 people in Jewish households here in Montgomery County. So we'll show all of you, Shalom tova, Happy New Year and an easy fast forward next week for y'all. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Winder.
Great, thanks Commissioner McKeeshia. Good morning, everyone. How's everyone doing? Doing okay? I know girls are like, what is this? Can we just go back to being in high school? So we'll get to you in my remarks and then you can scoot out of here. So before I jump into a couple of other things, I just want to, you know, acknowledge the past couple of weeks. I know it's been a challenging time for communities across the country. And we're seeing a lot of discourse on television, in social media. I often have to tell myself to stay out of the comments on Facebook, but I never do. It's my evening ritual. But we know that those outlets have often been very divisive and counterproductive, especially to the work that we do collectively to make Montgomery County a great place to live, work and raise the family. So, you know, I just want to say in moments like this, I just want to emphasize again that it's important to engage with each other in good faith and with respect, even when or especially when we don't agree. I think we as a board have a responsibility to operate and model that behavior. But personal attacks, hate speech, violent speech has no place in our community or online spaces. So I just want to ensure that everyone collectively, you know, regardless of who you are, take a moment to not be complicit to, you know, the hatefulness that is out there. We have a lot to be grateful for and to be joyful about. And look, if we can all engage in seeking to understand and give each other that dignity and respect, the world will be a much better place. And so I just wanted to say that at the outset. And then I'll go to the next thing. In the spirit of compassion, this month is Recovery, National Recovery Month. And it's really reflective of how our community recognizes some of our most vulnerable friends and neighbors. This has been a month of milestones and connections for my family. Just last week, my brother Randy celebrated two years clean and sober. We were able to share our family's story of addiction, recovery and the amazing people that we met along the way at several community events this month. I had the honor of hosting Pennsylvania Secretary of Drug and Alcohol, Dr. Latika Davis-Jones as a keynote speaker. And I want to thank her for her work to tackle the substance use epidemic that exists in our state. And I'm glad that she came to Monaco to do the Reflections on Recovery event. We first met in 2023 and that was the first time that I had the courage to really share my story publicly. And I'm glad to see that fast forward some two years later, we were able to do an event together to show people that recovery is possible. Commissioner McKeeshia and I also attended Lights of Hope at Elwood Park Zoo to commemorate those who have lost their lives to addiction and shine a light on the possibilities of recovery. So it was good to be there with you. And this past weekend, I was proud to walk alongside my brother Randy at the Pro Half Recovery Walk at the Navy Yard. For many of you know, many of you know that I lost my mother or we lost our mother a year and a half ago. And I watched her journey to save her son from opioid addiction. And so this month has been filled with so much hope, not only for our family. And I know that my brother, my, my mother is, is proud of the work that my brother has done to maintain his sobriety. So I just want to say that, you know, if anyone is early in recovery, is still struggling to find sobriety, that recovery is possible and that my family's journey is living proof of that. So thank you to my team and all those who have made recovery possible. On October 7th, we are excited to break around on the New Trail Junction Center. We've been talking about this probably since I joined, joined the board back in '23. It's a multimillion dollar transformation of Narsetown's historic freight station into a vibrant community hub and a gateway for thousands of trail users and residents alike. The project has been shaped by the community, ensuring inclusive amenities and design, a design that honors both Narsetown's past as well as its future. The Narsetown area has been home for me for more than 40 years. So I'm glad to see this project move forward between this project and our justice center getting, between this project and our justice center getting closer to completion. Did you see the plant? Have you seen the plants are going up, the trees? I think Mr. Morgan, you were talking about the trees the last time you saw them on the, the way in. And I know our Commerce Department is doing a lot of great work to engage Narsetown's Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, to really work to revitalize Narsetown and, and Main Street. So I'm really just proud of the investments that we're making into the Narsetown community. So we'll hope that you'll join us on October 7th for the, as we break around for that new, that new Trail Junction Center. And I think last but not least, you ready ladies? Ready and go. So finally, how about those Eagles, right? But there are two sets of Eagles. There's two sets of Eagles, actually. First, we can celebrate the Philadelphia Eagles being 3-0 in the last three seconds of a historic game this past weekend. What a game. I know we're still on a high from that. But there's an even more important group of Eagles that are here today. And that's the Lansdale Eagles, the girls' flag football team who represented the Philadelphia Eagles in the NFL Flag National Championships in July. Let's give them a round of applause. So we're so proud that you, so our Lansdale Eagles reached the semifinals, right? Is that right? In the, in the national competition. And we're so proud they represented Southeast Pennsylvania on the national stage. So joining us today are seniors, Katerina, Jenna, Aubrey, raise your, did we get, okay, you're here, okay? And Ally is here. Good, 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 good. And of course, their coaches, Brandon and Larry. Okay. So we're going to come up, give you a commendation and we'll take a picture with you. Congratulations.
Actually, the Lansdale Catholic Crusaders.
Okay, well, my team did not give me the, should I say that again? Lansdale Catholic Crusaders. That's the correct name. Sorry about that. Congratulations. 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 Who wants to hold, hold this? Okay. Team in the middle. Sorry.
Alright, right here, folks. Alright, one, two, three.
What do you guys are up there? Can we do a quick Eagles chant?
Spell it, right? Do we have to spell it, right?
Yes.
Alright, let me think about that. Ready?
E.
E.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Great job.
Alright, that's it for me.
You done?
Yeah.
I'm done. Yep.
Alrighty. Trying to think what's left to say. Well, I do agree that the justice center is looking awesome out there, especially with all the plantation going in, the trees and the bushes and all that. It's going to look really great. Only thing missing out there is the 9/11 memorial that we need to bring back. That's just my opinion, but we'll see what happens. I have to agree with Commissioner Weiner and Commissioner McKeeshia said before as well. You know, the last two weeks or so has been very trying times. And it's just, the last two weeks we're referring to, but this has been trying times for a while now. And the division within, within our country and how it ripples across into the states, the counties, the cities, municipalities, communities, it's really taking its toll. And it's, as elected officials, as leaders of Montgomery County, it's, it's, you know, we see it day in and day out. And since taking office last year, we've tried to demonstrate from a leadership standpoint that although we don't, may not agree all the time on everything, which we shouldn't as, as elected officials, and that's okay. But when we disagree, we disagree and then we move on. We haven't, you know, really, I mean, sometimes we might get a little, you know, loud or heated or whatever about the issue that we're talking about. But we're able to get up, walk into the other rooms and then we're, you know, we just get along and we talk and, you know, we, we go to events all over the county. There's lots of times there's three of us there or two of us there or, you know, and, you know, we really have been trying to lead by example to demonstrate that even though we may have differing opinions, that's okay. I was able to speak at a couple of vigils over the last couple of weeks. And I really tried to promote the messaging of, you know, unity even during disagreement. And I was at one last night and I talked about that, you know, we all have our opinions. We all have what we feel is right and what we think is right. And that's okay. And that's, I said, you know, it's our, it's, it's, that's the way we have to accept each other. We all think differently, differently on a lot of different topics. And just because we disagree doesn't mean we have to sit here and say, well, now I hate you because you don't agree with me. That's the time for us to, you know, to reach out and say, well, I, I don't disagree and here's why. And then you, and then somebody comes back and says, well, I don't agree with that. You say, okay. Alright, well, that's alright. I mean, we have to stop this, this, this rhetoric that was going on. It's, and a lot of times, and I agree with Commissioner Weiner, I, it's hard not to read comments because how, but how vile it's gotten. And I'm not saying any individual group is any different than any other group. It's gotten very vile. And then we saw yesterday, you know, shots rang out at an ICE detention center in, in Texas. Don't care what your position is or what you feel regarding law enforcement. No matter what, that's not the answer. And I called the shooter a coward because after shooting four, five or six shots, whatever it may be, he decided to take his own life. And then we also had recently, and I just want to bring up because I want to get their names correctly. We had officers that were shot in York County responding to a domestic dispute. And three officers lost their lives. And, you know, Detective Sergeant Cody Becker, Detective Isaiah Emmanheiser and Detective Mark Baker. These were three individuals that decided to make the call to serve their communities. And they were, their lives were cut short by, you know, somebody that, you could call it assassination, you could call it whatever you want, but their, their life was cut short. An ambush, actually, is what occurred there. And, and for whatever reasons, we, we see these things are happening. And I, I'd ask, and I know all three of us because we, we tried to get a message out. We put a post out last week on, on Facebook as well, talking about how we all got to come together. And I just hope that after the events over the last couple of weeks, and we know a lot of this was spun off also with Charlie Kirk being assassinated and a lot of stuff went on, you know, regarding, you know, what you believed and not believed, what you thought or didn't like about Charlie Kirk or liked about Charlie Kirk. It's all irrelevant when we get to that point of when somebody is basically assassinated for what they felt was, in their mind, freedom of speech. So I, I, I ask that we all, we all ask collectively that we all come together as a community, as a society. And it's just as easy to extend a hand, to say, you know what, I disagree, but that's okay, than it is to go and become vicious and make ridiculous remarks or take, even worse, by taking the approach that we've seen most recently with the violence, with assassinations or ambushes. So with that, thank you for listening for a couple of seconds there, but I think it's important because I know that all three of us have tried to do our best to work together for the best for Montgomery County. So, real quick, a couple of things. Last week, I spent some, I spent the day up in Hatfield. I visited several businesses. We had, I met with some of the business as a, having a lunch. But we went on a tour to Clemens Food Group. They're one of the largest suppliers, I believe globally, for our pork products and our all favorite bacon, if we like bacon, right? You know how hard it was when I went into where they're doing a bacon production and you seen all that bacon? It's like, man, this is like, you know, if you like bacon, I guess I should say. But it was actually really, really interesting to see the operation. They've been, they're fifth generation now, family business. And they're a huge employer in the area up in Hatfield. So we're very happy and we want to thank them for having us there. Then we went over to the Roden Group and Roden Group specializes in, I guess, injection molding of like plastic products. One of the things that we saw while we were there was they were running, we're watching them create handles for those five gallon water jugs, which was really interesting watching the whole process. But also, they were, the founder of the business actually created Connects. And big toy, you know, if you're familiar with it, it's, it's like Legos, but they, they're all engineered pieces that connect together. Some really cool things that they've been able to do with those over the years. They had a grandfather clock that was created out of the pieces, a big Ferris wheel. But again, they're, they're employer in the area, very technology driven with the machinery that they use. But it's cool because they're, they're providing injection molded plastic items globally. And, and again, it's a business that's right here in our backyard. So we're, we're excited to be there and we want to thank them as well for having us there. So we, we've been out, again, the three of us have been going into different communities and visiting with businesses and, you know, really understanding. and, you know, really understanding the needs and the successes out there and figuring out, helping to see how we can continue to grow Montgomery County. Also, our Monco 250, our planning commission is hosting a public event on September 30th, 4 to 6 p.m. at the Ambler Theater. Our planners will be revealing or unveiling, reveal, the draft version of the goal strategies of our next county comprehensive plan. So I attend at one in, I forget where it was. It was Lansdale, I think, was it Lansdale? Sometimes we forget where we're at. We go to a lot of different places. But it's, it's really good, a lot of very useful information. They, and a lot of effort went into this, creating this, this draft plan, working with community leaders, community representatives as well. So if you're in the Ambler area, please stop in and, you know, kind of get a review of the, of the next comprehensive plan. And I think rumor has it that they'll probably have popcorn and cake and stuff there too. So kind of try to bribe you a little bit. I mean, how could you say no to popcorn? So, so they're going to be celebrating, planning commission is going to be celebrating their 75th anniversary. So they're going to have the cake there to celebrate. And then I finally, before I get into our Monco winners this month, I just want to, I was able to, two weeks ago, I think it was, two weekends ago or so, I was able to participate in a, celebrating a 100th birthday celebration, Bobby Shantz. He, Bobby Shantz was a Philadelphia Phillies. He, he grew up in Pottstown. He played with several different Major League Baseball teams. There's a whole write-up about him, a lot of, you know, very interesting guy, very successful Major League Baseball career. He was, like I said, a Philadelphia Philly. He was an all-star pitcher. He won, he was part of winning World Series. I forget what year it was with the Yankees, I believe. Ooh, I know the Yankees, shouldn't say the Yankees in here. But he, he won in 1952. He won the American League MVP while playing with the Athletics. So it was really exciting and I was a part of a group. It's called Warriors Watch. And it's a group of motorcycle enthusiasts. And we go to different, different type of events. So it was kind of exciting that we rolled in with 60-plus motorcycles with fire engines and all that. And he was, he was blown away. And he was also a veteran. I mean, that was even more important than his Major League Baseball career. He was a veteran and I believe it was the Air Force. So we're real excited to, I thought we would have some pictures up, but we're real excited to celebrate his 100th birthday celebration. So with that, we'll jump into the Way to Go winners. So this month, we have several individuals, again, that have done a tremendous work and outstanding job here at Montgomery County. We like to recognize these individuals. My understanding is unfortunately, based on their shifts or duties, they're not be able to make it here today. So we're just going to announce them and show some recognition. So we'll start off with Clarence Smith in the Public Property Department. Oh, Clarence is here. There you are. Tired, but you're, you're like, what, third shift, second shift? Thank you for being here and thank you for all your hard work. Get your recognition before you run out.
Clarence, we need a picture.
We can take a picture with you. So while he's doing that, Helena Pierce. Is Helena just make, because I was told nobody was going to make it, but I don't want to. Helena, nope. Helena is OSP four in the Office of Mental Health and Development Disabilities, early and early intervention with HHS. We have Susan Wenrick, interim contract director in the Office of Finance. Clarence, we want to get a picture with you. You're making, you're going to make, come on up here.
You've come a long way.
Then you can run home and get your rest.
No problem.
Thanks for being here.
Got to do it all right.
Yeah, that's right.
Right here. One, two, three.
Get some sleep.
That's great. He was up all night and came here quickly and now he's on his way home to jump in the bed. So he'll be back here again tonight. So I mentioned Susan and the next up is Brendan Valverde from, he's inmate services caseworker in our corrections facility. And last but not least, John Mandrecci. He's our regional manager in our parks, trails, and historic sites. All of them have been doing amazing job, amazing work here in Montgomery County. And we are honored to be able to recognize their efforts. So I got.
Thank you. Okay, so first up, we're going to hear a presentation on our fall vaccination plans from Dr. Alvin Wong, our chief medical officer in the Public Safety Department.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to provide this update. My name is Alvin Wong. I've been a Montgomery County resident for more than 25 years. I'm an emergency physician and I serve as the chief medical officer and regional EMS medical director for the Department of Public Safety. My remarks today come from a strictly scientific and clinical perspective as an academic emergency physician. And my goal is simple, to help our community understand why fall vaccinations matter, what the current evidence shows, and how our residents can access these important protections. Next slide, please. And then a quick disclaimer, although I am a physician, I am not your physician. So I would encourage everyone to consult with your primary care physician for individualized medical advice. Next slide, please. So this is a graph from the CDC showing frequently detected viruses from laboratory specimens that have been submitted for analysis. Next slide. Every fall, as temperatures cool and people spend more time indoors, we see predictable increases in respiratory viral illnesses, particularly influenza, RSV, and COVID-19. Emergency departments, family practice offices, and urgent cares across the region begin to fill with patients who might otherwise have remained healthy. Vaccinations are not the only tool, but these remain the most effective way to blunt these seasonal surges. Next slide, please. At the individual level, vaccines reduce the risk of contracting these illnesses and more importantly, decrease the severity of illness if infection occurs. For example, influenza vaccination consistently reduces hospitalizations. And COVID-19 vaccinations have proven, demonstrated effectiveness against severe disease and death across multiple studies. RSV vaccination is newer, but early data are very encouraging, especially in high-risk groups like infants, seniors, and pregnant women. Next slide, oh, you can stay here, please, actually. So beyond individual benefit, however, there is community benefit as well. Vaccines provide a community-wide shield and when vaccination rates are high, transmission decreases. These protect vulnerable populations such as newborns, older adults, and those with weakened immune systems who may not respond fully to vaccinations themselves. This concept is what we often call community or herd protection and is critical for managing hospital capacity. Every avoided hospitalization preserves resources for trauma patients, heart attacks, strokes, and all the other emergencies that do not take a holiday just because the viral season hits us. The end goal here is straightforward, to reduce preventable deaths and serious illness. In the United States, influenza kills tens of thousands annually. RSV hospitalizes more than 150,000 older adults. And COVID-19 continues to cause deaths each year. Each of these diseases has safe, evidence-based vaccines available now. Next slide, please. So patients and families often ask where they can turn to for reliable advice. And the good news is that multiple professional organizations have provided clear and scientific-driven guidance. The Pennsylvania Department of Health endorses the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics for Children, the American Academy of Family Physicians for the general population, and the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists for pregnant women. These organizations base their recommendations on rigorous physician-driven evidence review and not opinion. Next slide, please. In the interest of transparency, I've summarized each organization's guidance here, but won't spend the time to go through every detail individually. It's important to note that vaccination recommendations across all three organizations mirror each other and coincide with existing recommendations. COVID-19 vaccinations are recommended for all children without contradiction above ages six months. And influenza vaccines are recommended for all children six months or older as well. Ideally, we want to get an influenza vaccine before the end of October because that's when peak flu season will start. Next slide, please. The American Academy of Family Practice is charged with providing recommendations to the general population. They recommend that COVID-19 vaccines be given to all individuals 18 years of age or older. And especially important, if you're over age 65, are at increased risk for severe COVID-19 or have never received a COVID-19 vaccine before. They make a similar recommendation as the American Academy of Pediatrics for influenza vaccine and recommend that all patients over six months of age receive a vaccination. Next slide. And lastly, the American Academy of OB-GYNs. They recommend that pregnant patients get vaccinated with updated 2025 vaccine as soon as possible in any trimester of pregnancy and at the earliest possible opportunity to maximize maternal and fetal health. Influenza recommendations are mirrored as the COVID-19 vaccinations. And there are very specific recommendations for the RSV vaccine, which are best discussed with an OB-GYN. Next slide, please. The good news, however, is that there is insurance coverage for these vaccinations. And on Monday, the Pennsylvania Insurance Department, in partnership with the Governor's Office, confirmed that all private health insurance companies in the Commonwealth are required to cover vaccines that were recommended on their 2024 ACIP or Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices Guidelines. This means that costs should not be a barrier for those with insurance. And for those without insurance, federally funded programs remain in place to provide access. So tying all of these recommendations together, next slide, please. When we consider seasonal trends, the proven individual and community benefits, the reduction in deaths and hospitalizations, and the guidance of trusted professional organizations, and the fact that insurance cover is mandated, the conclusion is very clear. Vaccination is one of the most effective tools that we have to keep Montgomery County healthy through the fall and through months. And now while I wrap up, we have our dedicated team of nurses from the Office of Public Health to provide COVID-19 and flu vaccines for those who are interested. But I want to use this opportunity to talk about where we can go for vaccinations. Next slide, please. So vaccines are available through multiple pathways. Certainly, your first steps should be your primary care physician, your pediatrician's office, or your OB-GYN. Local pharmacies and community health clinics, such as the OPH Vaccine Clinics, are available resources as well. I have on this slide a QR code which will link you directly to the Montgomery County webpage showing where you may schedule your vaccination if you would like to go to one of the OPH clinics. Next slide. And with that being said, I want to thank you again for this opportunity to present, and we welcome any questions.
Thank you so much. Look, I just want to say I'm grateful that the Governor and the Department of Health have taken the action to require that insurers cover this so people don't have to pay out of pocket. And I don't even know what it would cost, but that would be certainly having an impact that would be negative for the whole community if people didn't have access to the vaccines. And there's been a lot of confusion and delay at the federal level. But we're following very clear recommendations and guidelines from those who know the science and the data in public health best. So thank you for making that clear.
And I was just going to say, I lost my mother to COVID some four years after the pandemic. And while she was compromised because she had other illnesses, like as her caregiver, like it was, would have been irresponsible of me to not be vaccinated and potentially bring COVID into the home. And so, and COVID was eventually what ended up taking her life. So I'm going to do my part to get vaccinated and ensure my family's vaccinated so that we can ensure that those that are vulnerable, you know, friends and neighbors, we're not putting them at risk. So thank you for, for your leadership. And I hate shots, but I'm going to do it for the cause.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're going first, right?
I'll go first.
Oh, we're going at the same time. We're doing the needles at the same time, no? That's what we did last, that's what.
That's what we did last time. Hopefully, if you have a Band-Aid, the superhero one, preferably. That's it? It says? I heard you shots have a lot more serum in them.
How easy is that?
Thank you very much.
We try to move quickly through the meeting so we don't fall asleep. Okay, next up, we're going to hear from our CFO, Dean Orton, on our quarterly financial update.
Thank you. Real quick, so I'm going to give you an update on where we stand with our 2024 comprehensive annual financial report and the posting of it. Also, I wanted to recap the volunteer emergency service real estate tax rebate program that we just completed our first year with and talk a little bit about what the plans are for next year. And we're going to look at revenue performance through July 31st of 2025 and expenditures. And then I'm going to talk a little bit more about our financial planning and our budget process for 2026. Next slide, please. So real quick, our 24 financials have been under audit for the past several months. We have a new external auditor, Mayor Dusel. And they are in the final stages of completing, completing the review of the audited financial statements. And we're hopeful that they'll be posted by early next week. So copies of that information will be posted out on the county website under the Controllers Department and provided to the commissioners and appropriate outside parties as well. So real quick, a recap on the real estate tax rebate program. We had almost 1,100 active volunteers that qualified for the rebate, real estate tax rebate. And this was, you know, anywhere in the range of 10% to 100%. As you know, based on the approved program ordinance, they earn points as the year goes on for various volunteer services that are provided with fire companies and EMS agencies. On average, rebates were around $600. We issued approximately $664,000 of total real estate tax rebates. And that was for the tax year 2024. So the volunteers earn their points through that year. They're certified by each of the companies. And then they submit that to the, to the county in the beginning of 2025. And that's how the program rolls. So we're now getting prepared for 2026. It was the first year of the program. Obviously, in '25, we learned a lot from it. We're going to be meeting with the emergency service agencies later in the fall just to talk more about what the expectation is and what the timeline will be for the program in 2026. We're also going to be meeting with the local taxpayers since they have the responsibility of providing certification for those applicants that are applying. And we're going to look at ways that we can streamline that process for the volunteer, volunteer fire companies and EMS, EMS agencies as well. Next slide. So turning to the financial performance for the first seven months of 2025. As you can see, we are trending in line. As you can see, we are trending in line year-to-date, both on the revenue side and expense side. We've collected 73% of the revenue budget, which is to be expected. We'll talk a little bit more about that and the reasons why. We've expended about 55% of the overall budget. So overall personnel costs, which is a big part of the budget in the range of 45%, when you look at the actual year-to-date, they are trending moderately lower than the budget through the first seven months. However, there is cost pressure in the area of healthcare and in the county pinching funding. And I'm going to cover those points in the slides ahead. Next slide, please. Just an overall snapshot, so you can see this is the revenue that was collected in the first seven months. 71% of it's real estate taxes, and then another 20% is our federal and state grants. To be expected, over 50% of the general fund budget comes from real estate tax revenue. And we would, at this time of the year, expect to have collected probably in the range of 97%, 98% of our total real estate taxes. Next slide, please. When you look at the major revenue categories, as I mentioned, you can see real estate tax collection received 97% of the budget. We have a very good collection rate historically, and that continues from the numbers that we see at the moment. I will talk about the federal and state grants, even though they're trending along the budget line with the state budget impasse. We have seen a slowdown, obviously, on a lot of the revenue categories that we typically get from state and the former grants. So that is a topic that I'll be covering a little bit here. Any others, I would say, except for investment income, you know, are in line with the budget. Investment income is outperforming, as I had mentioned in my last financial presentation a few months back. It continues to perform well, and I do believe we're going to exceed the budget by the time we get to the end of the year. Next slide, please. So real estate tax assessment, our assessment base, this is probably one of my biggest concerns and, you know, one that we cover in a lot of our discussions and presentations since, you know, real estate housing obviously has a big impact on the general fund budget. And what you're looking at now is current information through August 31st. It comes directly from the Board of Assessments. So it's tracking our assessment growth month-to-month throughout the year. And you can see, year-to-date, you know, through August 31st, we're actually in the negative. We're down by .10% from where we started in the beginning of the year. When you look at last year at this time, we had very, very moderate growth, about .17%. So this isn't a good sign. And, you know, we'll continue to monitor this as the months go on here. And, you know, obviously, we're going to have to develop a '26 budget that will need to project out what we think the real estate tax assessment base will look like when we start the year in '26, and then any potential growth that could happen as we go through '26. You know, this is a little bit deceiving. You know, there is growth, obviously, but it's been offset by assessment appeals that are unfavorable that have cut into some of that positive growth that we've realized. Next slide. And you can see this, as you look at our trend over, you know, the last 10 years or so, we were growing annually anywhere between a half and three-quarters of a percent. But you can see in '23, you know, that started to slow down. And this is overall net growth. So again, there's, there's negatives and positives that are mixed in with the numbers. But, you know, the trend in '24 was very, very limited growth, right? I'd call it flat and extremely moderate. And right now, we're in the negative. So we have to continue to pay close attention to it. And obviously, we will model out our forecast for where we think real estate tax revenue will end for the end of '25, and then rebase ourselves going into '26. Next slide. Just an overall snapshot of what's going on in the housing market in Montgomery County. Some positive news here, you know, when you look at the total number of homes sold in 2025, so for the first eight months, we're up 2.1% when you compare it to the same time period in 2024. And the median price has been increasing from month-to-month. Right now, it's at $490,000. That's about a 4.3% increase. When you look at the same time period last year, $470,000. Looking back to just July, you know, it was higher. But, you know, these are snapshots in time. I think the positive news is that the trend is the median home sale has continued to increase, you know, as we've gone through the months this year. Next slide, please. So some of the emerging revenue trends that we need to be aware of. You know, I talked about the collection of the real estate tax. That's positive. It's in line with what we would expect with the budget. You know, the 2% discount period ends on April 1st. A big chunk of the revenue comes in at that point. And the flat period ends on June 1st, and we're now in the penalty period. To date, we've had about $6 million of discounts that have been issued. So those are taxpayers that are paying early. A lot of that's done through, you know, the mortgage companies, you know, doing their bulk filings of tax being that they obviously take advantage of the 2% discount. It's pretty much in line with the budget. I think we budgeted about $6.1 million for discounts. So since the period's over, we'll probably end up very, very close to the budget on that. I talked about investment income earlier. This is good news. It's trending to outperform the budget. The budget's about $5.9 million. However, when we put together the 2025 budget, you know, we were anticipating that the feds would have reduced short-term rates. Obviously, that took a while. We just experienced a quarter percent reduction. And, you know, there's, there's future reductions that, you know, economists are looking at that, you know, could happen by the end of the year and then into '26. So, you know, I'd say over the next 15 months, we are going to be looking at something less than what we're earning today. However, it's pretty strong in terms of how we have our funds invested through Treasury, our Treasury Office. You know, we're getting anywhere between 4% and 4.25% on liquid funds. So the early projection now is that we'll outperform budget by about $1.1 million. And I'll refine this number as we get closer to putting out the proposed budget. State gaming revenue has continued to grow from quarter to quarter. Based on the most recent information, I'm projecting, you know, we'll exceed budget by $1.2 million. And we'll reevaluate what we think '26 will look like once we have another quarter of revenue under our belt, which we'll know about in October. Next slide, please. I talked about the real estate assessment base. As I said, you know, there's been some unfavorable assessment appeals, the purchase side and residential side, that have impacted our growth. We continue to look at the federal and state funding, you know, that makes up probably 35% of our general fund. You know, right now, we are utilizing general fund reserves to fund some of the critical health and human services that are primarily funded by state funding. So with the state budget not passed yet, the new fiscal year, which will begin July 1st, we're not receiving funding for those services. So the county is using general fund reserves to take care of that with the hopes that the budget will be passed soon, and then we'll immediately get the funding back in. It does have a little bit of a negative effect on us because those funds would be invested right now and would be earning us. Next slide, please. Turning to the expenditure side, as I said, about 55% of the budget's been expended. That's in line with what we would expect at this time of year. You can see personnel costs, you know, represents 45% of the overall expense so far through July 31st. Debt service is another 12%. A good chunk of our debt service payments are typically in January and July. So I'd say probably over two-thirds of the debt service has been paid year-to-date, and then we'll have some remaining through year-end. Next slide, please. When you look at the major functional areas across the board, you can see to the far right, percentage spent, you know, we're pretty much in line through all the functional areas. I will note that others is a mixture of things, which includes debt service, our appropriations to Septa and the Norristown Public Library. So that one has a little more detail to be explained that is probably too deep for us to get into right now. But I would note that that's what's included in that category. Next slide, please. So on the expenditure side, some emerging trends, you know, personnel expense. We're trying to keep a close eye on the things that we can control. And healthcare cost has been a very critical area that, you know, high pressure in terms of increase in legalization, increased service costs. This isn't just our organization. This is, you know, the private sector, the public sector. The current trends are, you know, in the 8% to 9% range for cost increases that are projected for healthcare overall. And those are the '26 projections. But even coming into '25, the same type of levels were projected, and we're experiencing it. By the time we get through '26, you know, we're anticipating right now, and, you know, we just went through, you know, a very detailed analysis with our healthcare consultants. And, you know, it's probably going to be, you know, 10% increase by the end of this year on actual performance. And then we'll probably be budgeting in that range, 9% to 10% for 2026 as well. We have some higher costs in overtime in some of the departments. And, you know, a lot of it has to do with service demands. You know, some of our larger departments, like Correctional Facility are where some of the bigger overtime numbers are. However, there are some higher vacancy rates in these departments. So some of that overtime cost that we wouldn't anticipate is being offset by some vacancy savings too. But there are some topics going on that are driving overtime costs in the service areas. Some news that we learned earlier this year, you know, our Retirement Plan Actuarial Evaluation Report was completed in June. And we didn't expect this. However, the county contribution on an actuarial evaluation basis is up $2.1 million. So that'll come in higher than budget for '25. We're in the midst of getting a projection for our '26 budget, which is always provided by the actuaries in the fall before we adopt the budget. I did want to remind the board that embedded in our budget is a $4 million negative appropriation, which we put in for expected budgetary savings. So that is in the 2025 budget. And obviously, a big part of it is expected to come through personnel costs. But we have to, you know, closely keep an eye on this between now and the end of the year. As I said, we do have a couple of cost drivers in personnel. So we're hopeful that we'll have vacancy savings as well that will offset this. Our debt service expense will be lower than budget. We completed a new money bond issue mid-year, and we're projecting that just because of the timing of the bond issue. We had anticipated that we'd have about $5 million of new debt service that would have hit relating to the bond issue. But it's actually less than that, at least for 2025. So that'll be on a budget basis about a $3.5 million savings. Next slide, please. So some other emerging trends. As you know, there's been a lot of discussion around Septa funding at the state level. And we just recently received from Septa what the county's local operating match will be for 2026 based on Septa's current funding situation. We contribute $7.8 million currently. It's going to go up moderately at $150,000 for 2026. However, there's new state legislation to increase the local match to 20%. It's been 15%, and that would be in 2029 and beyond. I just put that out there as a note. We'll continue to follow this. However, at least for '26, we do know where we stand with our local match on the operating side. And if there is a contribution on the capital side, it's roughly about $1.7 million. That's only going up by a small amount as well. Real estate tax refunds, they are projected to exceed budget. This has to do with what I was discussing earlier with the real estate tax assessment appeals, the unfavorable ones. We've had some that, you know, are multi-year that are just being resolved. So we may see a higher-than-expected cost there on the budget side. Next slide. Our energy costs, as you know, the Collar Counties and Montgomery had joined forces to create the Sustainable Energy Partnership with Southeastern Pennsylvania. We spent several years forming the group and planning. And 2025 is our first actual year where we're operating together on our, under our managed portfolio. We're buying our electricity wholesale. So we're getting some of the best pricing possible. And this is Bucks, Montgomery, Delaware, and ourselves. So we've been buying blocks of energy, you know, since '24 for the out-year. So right now, we're projecting that. And we've been getting fairly good pricing, you know, buying when there's dips. We have consultants that help us out with this. So we're projecting overall electric costs to remain flat in '26 compared to '25. So this has been a really good move for all the counties. Next slide, please. I had mentioned in my last financial presentation that we had an initiative underway earlier in the year to look at our budgets and analyze in '25 for opportunities for efficiencies and cost savings. And all of our departments participated in the exercise. We've identified at the moment about $2.5 million of expenditure reductions through that analysis that are being evaluated, not only for savings in '25, but to be implemented in the '26 budget as a reduction. So a big part of it is in personnel, and we have about 15 full-time equivalent positions that are vacant. So we are saving against the budget because they're vacant at the moment, but they're under review for elimination in the '26 budget. And we'll have more on that as we discuss with the commissioners in the weeks ahead, how we're framing out the '26 budget. But there's also a reduction in various discretionary spending items across all the, all the departments. This includes training, materials, contracted services. And we're, we're hopeful that this number's going to be larger than what we're seeing right now. You know, we just got through departmental budget reviews in the summer months, and we're fine-tuning the numbers. But we're looking for, you know, every possible opportunity to contain costs or, you know, reduce expenses and be more efficient. Just recently, the county has engaged a consultant that, you know, they'll begin their work in the weeks ahead here to review our expenditures, our contracts, and look for savings and efficiencies. So hopefully, we'll have some of that information before we put the proposed budget out, but it'll likely carry over into '26. Next slide, please. So some other cost containment and revenue enhancement opportunities. This year, the Prebonitaries Office and the Register of Wills went through a formal exercise of evaluating their fees across the board. Both have approved approval from the courts to increase fees. They're in the, in the process of doing that. So in the last quarter of '25, those new fee schedules are going to be put in place. And that revenue wasn't, wasn't anticipated in the '25 budget. So we'll get a little bit of it, and then we'll rebase for '26. So, and we do that across all our departments. Although, you know, in the row offices, it's, it's the bigger piece of our departmental fees that flow into the budget. Just recently, with the help of our outside healthcare consultants, the county was able to restructure its prescription benefit administration services. So this is a pharmacy that's provided for our employees. That's going to result in savings of about $1.3 million next year. And the contract would be effective as of January 1st. So that was a win-win for us. We went out to market competitively and restructured a few things, and we're able to achieve savings in that area. Let's talk about the joint purchasing of electricity. That has been positive and will on the '26 budget. Another area that is actually happening now, but will roll into the Another area that is actually happening now, but will roll into the '26 budget, the Office of Agent Services is transitioning its Muddsmen program in-house from contracted services which we use right now. This is projected to save about 300,000 annually, which will be able to be reallocated to other programs in the agent department. Next slide, please. So, you know, the financial outlet, the economy obviously is...
Question, the 1.3% from the previous A, is that included in the 2.5 million number? Or is that, that's a separate?
No, that's separate.
Yeah, okay.
That came up during our budget meetings.
Okay. So the 2.5 is specifically for just overall personnel?
A good chunk of it is, I'd say half of it, but, you know, around half of it, but it's, it's, the other piece of it is across the board in the various expenditure line items, like I was saying, training, materials, services.
Okay. We can probably wrap up if you want to close, I think, just we should probably move on.
What's that?
I'm saying we can probably wrap up after this.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was getting to the end of it anyhow, so I'll just quickly conclude with that, you know, we are in the process, you know, framing out what the 2026 budget is going to look like. That's going to be presented to the board in November and then we'll follow the normal public process with adoption scheduled for the last meeting in December.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone doing the work to find the savings. I know the last slides we had were about the uncertainty of what's happening in the state and thankfully we have not had to take any loans, we're just using the cash reserves for now. That's correct?
I'm sorry.
We're just using the cash reserves?
Yeah.
To pay for the state funding?
Yeah.
Right. How long could those last us?
You know, we have a pretty strong fund balance reserve.
Yeah.
So I'll just say by example, in 2015, we were going through the same thing. I wasn't here at the time, but over six months at that time, we depleted our fund balance reserves. So I'd say it's safe to say that by year end, we'd still be in a position to use our reserves and cover the services at the current levels.
Any other questions?
Couple of quick questions. The 2.3 million savings is on '25, which is hopefully transferable to '26, the 1.3 million that we're referring to is projection for '26, not '25, right?
Yeah, yes.
Right. And then as we deplete our savings, our reserve, that does have an impact on our revenue projections through interest, right?
Yeah, it does.
Right.
I'm hopeful that, you know, the state budget's adopted and, but yeah, it does cut into our investment income.
Right.
Can we come up with an estimate on what that is and share it with our legislators?
I could, I could work something out for that, yeah.
So is it possible in October for us to see a preliminary point in time budget for 2026 before we get this thing dropped on us in November of '27? Because I think it's important for us to start, I've been talking about this for a few months now, we have a large deficit and I think the sooner that we start talking about this and showing this publicly, that we just don't drop this bomb in November with anticipation of approval by the end of the year.
Yeah, we do have plans and dates scheduled for discussions with the commissioners on the preliminary budget, some of the new clause, some of the proposals.
But that's internal, I'm talking about at one of our commissioner meetings, public, that kind of given overview kind of where we're at.
So can I just add to Commissioner DeBello, like I want us to be careful about dropping bomb, like that's a little, you know, we're all internally taught having conversations about the budget and where we're at, so we're doing our due diligence to kind of understand what's happening. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner DeBello, you're saying kind of in advance of our hearings, budget hearings, people are not finding out about it, but I just, you know, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we know before we're presenting it out publicly, so we should probably talk about that internally in terms of what we do. None of us want to drop any bombs on any of our constituents, so I think we all take our fiduciary responsibility serious. I'm not saying if you're saying that we're not, but just lightly, just lightly, I don't want to scare people.
I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that traditionally in the county, the process has been come November, here's the budget, here's the hearings, and then there's approval. And what I'm saying is that we, I would like us to have a preliminary, and Commissioner Wynder and myself were on the school board, so this is very common from the school board perspective where as you're going through the process, there's like a preliminary review, you're kind of like keeping the public informed of where things are at, so that, oh, maybe I shouldn't have used the word bomb.
Yeah, I was just, it was a little...
Look, no matter how you slice it, right now, we're looking at a large deficit and I want the sooner that, you don't have to keep looking at him, you, you, but we have a large deficit and we need to talk to this publicly before November, because I don't want us to all of a sudden, and we are working very closely, we're trying very hard, we, each one of us have meetings with, with the finance department, we're getting, we're all up to date on where we're at. We've talked about all this, unfortunately collectively, we can't give direction other than in a public meeting. And what I'm saying is that I think October would be a great opportunity for us to at least start laying out and saying, this is what 2026 is looking like or could be looking like, and we have to make some very serious decisions.
I mean, those projections are already made, right? In terms of if, for example, if we just kept funding at a stable level, you know, if the military was the same, if we project for some inflation, you can come up with that pretty easily. Do we already have that?
If we were talking about a status quo budget and, you know, modeling out at a high level what we think, yeah, I mean, that, that's our baseline.
That last year, right?
Yeah, the 25 budgets are baseline, that's what we're trying to, you know, reduce by containing costs, but they're, you know, there's just natural cost increases that, and they're not small, right? Like we just talked about the healthcare, right? That's a big one, right? Pension, right? That's a lot. You got two there, right? Two million there. You got four million on healthcare, you're up to six, right? You got contractual base wage increases, right? You're talking to another, you know, several million, you got non-contractual base wage increase, so you're up to 11 million just in those smaller categories, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's all great points and that's why I'm saying that I think we should bring all this up sooner than in November. I've talked about this, I've said it for several meetings, several months, we're between a 30 and 40 million dollar deficit.
So what he is, but what he's doing right now is previewing some of the things that we're up against in 2026.
Right. So I think it's good for us to publicly, I'm not trying to make this a negative thing, I'm trying to make it a positive thing and saying, look, we're working on this, I want people to know that we're working on it and I want people to understand the effort that's going into, we all take this very seriously and all I'm saying is that I think it would be good to have like a preliminary view in October, that's all, that's...
Yeah, I think what could be helpful is that status quo essentially, right? If, you know, we do, we don't do nothing, right, in terms of the military rate and if all the inflation, healthcare, other costs, like what does that look like, right? Which I think, I thought we already saw that last year, I don't know, but...
Commissioner McKeever, if I could just add, there's also like assumptions, like I know in my budget meeting, like there's certain, you know, assumptions that we're making, things that we can do to continue to tinker with it so that we can thoughtfully like lower the tax burden on our, on our neighbors. So I think we're still talking about some of those things. I know there were at least three or four things that I suggested for us to maybe think about, you know, before we go prime, before we go primetime.
Right, yeah. The other, the other point you made was that we have this cost savings consultant and they just got started and we won't really have preliminary ideas from them until later in the year, right?
Yeah.
That's something that, you know...
You know, as the, as the year goes on, you know, from a performance standpoint of your financial performance, we're learning more and more about, you know, after you get six months of actual financial performance on your, you have a better idea where things are going, right? And, you know, a budget's a budget, you know, we don't always...
Right, and you've brought up really good points and what we're, what we're trying to say is no matter what, the budget, the county organically grows between three and four percent a year.
Yeah.
That, that's just, that's historical, that's, that's just normal things that we, some of the things we have no control, like you mentioned healthcare growth, you know, we may see an eight to 10 million dollar increase in our healthcare costs next year. That's all part of this organic growth that no matter what, we don't, it's not that we like it, it's not that we want to see it, but this is organic growth. We have wages, we have contracts, I mean, all these things go into that three to four percent organic growth per year. I mean, that's just, that's the reality of it.
Yeah, and so, you know, what, the point I wanted to make was, you know, you, you could start with the status quo budget and say, make assumptions, but when we get halfway through the year, you know, like we learned where the pension contribution, you know, mid-year, we just, you know, we just found out, you know, through our consultants, you know, with months of work, where we think we're going to land on healthcare. So Septa, all these things, right? They're becoming real numbers now and, you know, it's easier to present where the cost pressures are. So I'm open to whatever the board would like to do.
Yeah, we can talk to you.
I'm not standing here talking about the numbers.
Of course. Yeah, thank you for the update.
All right.
This is very helpful and, yeah, we'll move on to the next thing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, finally, under announcements, Nelly.
Buenos dias, good morning commissioners and everybody attending, y'as todo el mundo que esta aqui. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. I want to point out that every year we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month and this year theme is right there in talking about pioneers of change. I was very happy that we also were able to have a celebration yesterday with the staff and our amazing staff that are now Latinos or Latinos descents and we had a panel and we had a great time. Thank you Commissioner for coming to celebrate and value the contributions of Latinos in our country. These are eight of the countries that celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month and I wanted to mention them specifically because it's a time of course of celebration, of acknowledgement of all of the contributions of our Hispanics and our Latinos in, here in the country. So people always ask me Hispanic or Latino and there is a lot of history about using Hispanic or Latino. I, I chose like the basic concept for this meeting and also added a couple of other, another names that people use, but normally Hispanic refers to people from Spanish speaking countries, that's why we include Spain and then from Latin America, people from Latin America and Latinos. I am a very proud Hispanic Latina and I can say both because I speak Spanish and I also Latina from Caracas, Venezuela, thank you very much, and a very proud American. Next slide. I want to bring some key statistics on Latino impact and how much we contribute. Latinos contributed over 3.7 trillion to the US economy, driving the fastest growing economy segment since 2020. It is important also to highlight in here that every year, 1 million Latinos turn 18, which means that they are become eligible to vote in the, in the national elections. Another couple of key statistics on Latinos is that we are the driving force on small businesses. Latinos open 10 times more businesses, small businesses in the country, so we contribute towards the economy and the local economy, not only at the national level, but here at home in Montgomery County. I also wanted to honor our Latinos in the military. We're very proud that we have a large presence of Latinos very proudly serving and the representation is growing. As you can see, they currently represent 17% of active duty service members. And also, we have in the Marine Corps have the highest Latino representation at 23% and of course, we cannot forget our amazing big ones that served in the 65 Infantry Regiment and earn national recognition for their bravery. I also want to highlight, who has the feelings here? Let me see, let me see, last one, we have 12 players with Hispanic descendants playing in our feeling team, so we want to highlight that because it is important that we are part of this nation and we are part of the fabric of what we build every day. A couple of call of actions, we want to keep investing on education, health, workforce, leadership development, so we see our Latino community, member of the community succeed. Okay, I also wanted to highlight, family is very important for Latinos, but these are some of the things that I wanted to highlight that we bring to the table. Of course, resiliency, innovation, unity and family and youth leadership. Our children are the best gift that we can provide to our, to our, to our country and many of them emerging voices are shaping the future and we see them participating in different professional activities. Right now in Pittsburgh, we have about, we have, we have the biggest meeting of Latinos in, celebrating the Latino Conference that is celebrated every year. And here in our state, we have over a million Latinos that live and work and live every, and live here. We also bring our cultural richness and identity and this is very important because people love our music, our food, our dance, and we bring all of these culturally rooted celebrations to, also to the country. And I always tell people, it is important that people celebrate and honor in their roots so they can be the best they can be with the, in the place where they live. I want to bring your attention to the beautiful picture there. This was illustrated by a Mexican-American illustrator, Fatima Olio, and her theme is there is always a reason to celebrate. So even when things are very hard to go through right now, there is always a reason to celebrate and her picture is going to be featured. She is the winner for the 2025 in the contest and her picture is going to be posted and I'm going to bring more information later about where it is going to be posted. I also want to celebrate the people, the Latinos that are here in our county and are contributing in different areas and I was able to get to the internet and get a couple of them, but I want to highlight because many times we see Latinos in position like our superintendent Rodriguez, right, who has been an amazing superintendent, but we don't know that Luz Pereira, Luz Pereira has been serving the Latino community for many years and she is being a light for a lot of Latinos in poor generations here in Aklamo, serving over 20,000 people through her career. Next. And this is very important because this is, this is what we are, a community, a community of people that if you want to go fast, go alone, but if you want to go farther, go together, right? So we believe in the community and we want to... So we believe in the community, and we want to make sure that people understand that from our perspective. So, the final thought, as we acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month today, I want to also acknowledge the hundreds of Indian families and children who are being treated with unimaginable cruelty. The tears of my people reflect a deep pain in their souls, pain as real and profound as yours. These are the tears of our children shed daily in fear of unknown, and of their parents who go to work each day knowing they may never return home. You look Latino, why do you speak Spanish? How dare you work a long-wish job? National profiling is no new, it's simple changes is target. I send the many organizations, government entities, advocates, and allies who were titled to advance and secure our community future. Hispanics go beyond stereotypes, beyond Christian imaginary and bright colors. We carry stories of resiliency, family, traditions, and dreams. Our heritage is not only what is seen, but it's what is lived. Through values we pass down, the faith that moves us, the music that unites us, the flavors that come for us, and the strength that defines us. I am proud of my traditions, my language, and my latinidad. Hispanic Heritage Month is more than symbols, it's a living legacy of resiliency, survival, passion, and compassion. It is the love that moves us and unites us. It is the importance of family, community, and country. Mi gente, yo los veo, los respeto, y los admiro. How courageous you must be to come to a land you call home, one that doesn't always love you, love you back. Like many Latinos who have been living and working on these lands for generations, we are here, and we will be here for generations to come, because this country, the United States of America, is our country too. Thank you. And now, we're going to be doing a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, thank you commissioners, and I want to highlight some of organizations that invited, some of the leaders, but I want to highlight, of course, Adamino Ortiz, Dr. Houghton Kane, they are, almost fifty years ago, they opened Aklamo, and I want to acknowledge them, because Aklamo is one of the oldest organizations, and have been serving the community for forty-eight years. I want to also acknowledge the Cate, they are turning fourteen years. This Saturday, I'm gonna be joining them. I want to also acknowledge the following organizations, Leadership Council of Norristown, Centro Futural Latinos Unidos, in Poston, Hispanic Heritage Association, Ocho Hocken, Montgomery County Family Services, Project Libertad, Martha's Community Farm, Spanish Language Service Collaborative Hub, from the Community Connections here in Montgomery County, East Coast Opportunity Center, Man on Main Street, the Norristown Small Business Assistance Center, Unidos para Servir Norristown, in family therapy and consultation services. Thank you for the work that you do to serve our communities, and now I would like to invite you that for the first time, we have a proclamation that is also bilingual, so I'm very proud of that. So if I mention your organization and you are representative of those organizations, please join us for a picture with the commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you again, Nellie, thank you everyone for all of your work and commitment to our Hispanic and Latino communities, and thank you, Nellie, for also serving on the panel at WHYY, I heard that went very well, and there's a report that came out about the impact of immigrant communities in our region, and the bottom line is very clear that we simply would not be the same place, you know, without our immigrant communities. As you mentioned, seventy-plus percent of small businesses, did you say, or what was the?
Seven thousand five hundred.
How many, seven?
Seven thousand five hundred.
Seven thousand five hundred, I mean, it's amazing to know, you know, just the grit, resilience, and all the contributions that immigrant communities are making, and happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment. Do we have any commenters for agenda items first?
David Morgan.
Thank you.
Morning commissioners, I'm David Morgan from Ambler, and I'm commenting about Resolution G three in context of cost savings, as I really appreciate the budget presentation that happened today, and I think that when a lease happens, that commitment of funds should be really weighed carefully, because do we have opportunities for our staff to work from home more, as many businesses have, and utilizing many of the county facilities we already have? One facility that's largest comes to mind is space perhaps in the Justice Center, and I remember about eight months ago, there was a timeframe of eight months, and Mr. King's here today, we were talking about the buckets of funds for our taxpayers to be able to help fund the Justice Center, and this is sort of a, just about culmination of that eight months, when maybe a lot of the knowing of, is it four hundred fifteen million, the total cost for the Justice Center, and capital items such as this, I think should be weighed for our taxpayers affording them. I know you're all interested in savings, especially Commissioner DeBello voted against last year's almost ten percent increase in the first line of our tax bills, and then we had a thirteen percent increase in our real estate tax the year before. So with those steep increases, and there's still a thirty million dollar deficit, we taxpayers are really concerned about this cost of an agreement like this, and other, on Exhibit B, page three, there's other Justice Center items mentioned in that sheet. So how is it sorting out with this initiative to vote on this issue of G three today, and other justice-related costs for the Justice Center? How is the project maybe coming to fruition? Saying that, I appreciate Commissioner Winder's comments about trying to balance costs and all programs, and Commissioner Majica, you're mentioning about the Office of Innovation, and any of that is cost savings, so if that is productively helping us bring down this deficit, that would be wonderful. So, the other area I could see is new positions, how that might be weighed off by this particular cost, as we see them each meeting a page of new positions, and so is that beyond the budget each meeting? Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the September fourth, twenty-two, five minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder.
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. It seems self-explanatory, is that all right?
Uh-huh.
Do we want any details on that?
You can check all the resolutions together if you want.
Yeah, I'll go one by one, but, any board comment? If you have any questions, let me know, and I can ask the person to come up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution is approved. Moving on to an authorization to submit a grant application for residential substance abuse treatment program funding. Is there a motion to approve Resolution number two? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Moving on to Section Three, an agreement to enter into a lease with Ramco LLC for property in Norristown, for asset infrastructure. Is there a motion to approve Resolution number three?
So moved.
It's moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution is approved. Moving on to appointments to the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as described in Resolution G four? Moved by Commissioner DeBello.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution is approved. Moving on to appointments to the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as described in Resolution G five? Moved by Commissioner DeBello.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Before I finish the sentence, we're quite a rush. All in, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to commissioners' appointments, reappointments to the boards of health. Is there a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments as described in Resolution G five? Moved by Commissioner DeBello.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Before I finish the sentence, we're quite a rush. All in, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Tony Brew on our personnel list.
Good morning commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commission Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, with a timestamp of eight forty-seven AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel list is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to bids and RFPs. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Moving on to Section Three, an agreement to enter into a lease with Ramco LLC for property in Norristown, for asset infrastructure. Is there a motion to approve Resolution number three?
So moved.
It's moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Moving on to Section Three, an agreement to enter into a lease with Ramco LLC for property in Norristown, for asset infrastructure. Is there a motion to approve Resolution number three?
So moved.
It's moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Moving on to appointments to the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as described in Resolution G four? Moved by Commissioner DeBello.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to commissioners' appointments and reappointments to the boards of health. Is there a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments as described in Resolution G five? Moved by Commissioner DeBello.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Before I finish the sentence, we're quite a rush. All in, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to commissioners' appointments and reappointments to the boards of health. Is there a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments as described in Resolution G six?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Tony Brew on our personnel list.
Good morning commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commission Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, with a timestamp of eight forty-seven AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The advertisement is approved. Moving on to contracts. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Tony Brew on our personnel list.
Good morning commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commission Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, with a timestamp of eight forty-seven AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel list is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to bids and RFPs. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The advertisements are approved. Moving on to contracts. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel list is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to bids and RFPs. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The advertisements are approved. Moving on to contracts. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The advertisements are approved. Moving on to contracts. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. I'll have one comment, which is that, I believe, and our team brought this up in the financial presentation, but I thought it was great that things are gonna come on the Salary Board as well, that we have five positions that we're moving into the Office of Aging, and we're doing that because we were able to get out of a contract that was external and was costing us significantly more, so it's both a cost-saving initiative and a way to ensure that all of our older residents or seniors are getting the help they need in the Office of Aging, so thank you to David Moore, who's acting head of HHS, Jennifer Barnhart, engineering illustrator, and Lee for making that happen, that'll save us at least two hundred thousand dollars over the previous contract we had, so that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Any public comment?
Catherine Matthews. Hi, my name is Catherine John Matthews, I live in Franklin Township, in Montgomery County. I come to US as a legal immigrant, and thirty-five years ago, and then become American citizen six years later. I pledge my full allegiance to American, to America. I love this country, I'm proud to call America my country, even though I was not born here. I want to do everything I can to defend her and preserve her, so, once I become American citizen, I filed petition for my sister and brother to come to America. My sister waited for twelve years, my brother waited for seventeen years before they got their immigration visa. When I filed petition for my brother and sister, their children was still in elementary school, but when they got their immigration visa, their kids were married, so according to US law, their children and family could not come with them. So now, my sister and brother lives in Philly, and my, their children and grandchildren live in China, so family was separated by the border, but their children and grandchildren would not come illegally, because they know that is broken law, and that is criminal if they do that. So they were patiently waiting in line for their immigration visa right now. In the meantime, like, we know millions illegal immigrants have pulled into this country, because of open border in last four years. Now ISIS agents are trying to get those illegal immigrants out of this country, but we hear this false narrative said, many legal immigrants are afraid of ISIS agents. I'm here just trying to set record straight. My sister and brother, and many of their friends, live in Philly. They live a normal life, nobody we know. In my sister's apartment complex, there were over three hundred legal immigrants. No ISIS agent ever bothered any of them. So, I feel if you are illegal immigrant, you should be free, because you have been broken our country's law. You should go back to your country and wait in line, just like my sisters, and my brothers, the children and grandchildren. So, another thing I want to mention, you know, is my brother, my sister, and my sister, and their friends, they're not afraid of ISIS agents, but guess who they're afraid? They're afraid all those criminals are walk free in Philly street, because some of their friends have been mobbed in broad daylight in Philly. So, I just want, that's my comment. I have three minutes.
Thank you.
And?
Yeah, that's the limit, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Michelle Engrave? Good morning. I'm Michelle Engrato from Harlessville in Lower Salford Township, and I recently came across an article that was published in the Philadelphia Inquirer on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It was written by our two commissioners, Neil Makija and Jamila Winder. I'll read a brief excerpt. Quote, "As our county commissioners, we are responsible for making sound financial decisions.
You should go back to your country and wait in line, just like my sisters and my brothers, the children and grandchildren. So another thing I want to mention, you know, is my brother, my sister and my sister and their friends, they're not afraid of ISIS agents, but guess who they're afraid? They're afraid all those criminals are walk-free in Philly street because some of their friends have been mobbed in broad daylight in Philly. So I just want, that's my comment. I have three minutes.
Thank you.
And?
Yeah, that's the limit, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Michelle Engrave?
Hey, Gartson. Good morning. I'm Michelle Gartson from Harlessville in Lower Salford Township, and I recently came across an article that was published in the Philadelphia Inquirer on May 14th, 2025. It was written by our two commissioners, Neil Makija and Jamila Winder. I'll read a brief excerpt. Quote, "As county commissioners, we are responsible for making sound financial decisions. This administration's mass deportation plan would cost nearly a trillion dollars over the next decade." It goes on to say that, quote, "In Montgomery County, the financial impact of deportation would be devastating. Funds would be diverted from essential services to pursue a federal priority that does not align with our community's needs," end quote. I'd like to make a few points. One, the article did not include any sources for data or the math to illustrate the devastation to our county. I did my own research and can assume that the $1 trillion estimate, at least one of these sources for a trillion dollars came from the American Immigration Council, who published the same estimate exactly, but this represents a federal mass deportation plan for 10 million people over 10 years and includes in it a much higher cost to support additional enforcement agents, new detention facilities, and extensive legal processing. This estimate would tie to a cost of $70,000 per illegal immigrant deported. Two, in May 2025, this year, ICE actually published the cost to detain and deport an illegal immigrant to be only $17,000 based on actuals, not the hypothetical $70,000 inferred in the Philadelphia Inquirer article. According to Pew Research, we have about 14,000 illegals living in our county. Using my sources, it would cost $238 million to deport all of them. It's not a small sum, but far from a trillion dollars, and also far from $70,000 per person. Point three, the article did not address the current costs of caring for illegals who are in our county. Fair U.S. estimated a very conservative cost of $4,845 to provide each illegal immigrant and his children the numerous services they receive in the county. That amounts to $67 million spent every year to support them in Matco alone. The payback period if we deported all illegals in Montgomery County would be three and a half years. Therefore, the fiscal challenge is not one that is insurmountable. It's financially justifiable. I, as many citizens and legal residents, are curious why our Democrat commissioners believe it is the best interest of legal citizens to continue paying ever higher taxes and tightening their own budgets while the county subsidizes illegal immigrants who have not respected our rule of law in the country of the USA. Thank you.
I'll save my comments for the end. Go ahead. Excellent.
Hi, my name is Ed Moye. I live in West Norton Township. And first, I want to say that was a very well put together presentation, the Hispanic Heritage. Thank you very much, ma'am, for that. And to piggyback on the last speaker's, your speech, and right here, I just want to say, like I spoke before at the last meeting, the policy of not assisting ICE. All that ICE is trying to do is remove not just illegals, but the criminal element. Like I can read an article here, just as that young lady did. And I'll make it real fast, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'll be here all day. On September 10th, Jordana Cobos Martinez, an illegal alien from Cuba with a rap sheet including child sex abuse, grand theft of a motor vehicle, false imprisonment, carjacking, was arrested by the Dallas Police Department at a motel in Dallas for murder. Cobos Martinez allegedly used a machete to behead a merchant he had an argument with in front of a merchant's spouse and child. Reportedly, he then kicked the head of the victim's around like a soccer ball. All ICE is trying to do is to remove criminals. And that's why I think that the Montgomery County policy should be pulled. And we should actually get them back to our federal government and back to what they're trying to do, especially based on the numbers that this young lady just gave us. And also, I want to say, this is not Hispanic thing. I've got another article here, real fast. An Egyptian national, he used a mix of flamethrower and Molotov cocktails, attacked 29 people. He injured 13 of them, and one 82-year-old woman died from her wounds from being attacked. This is not Hispanic thing. This is about illegal criminals that ICE is trying to remove from our country. The number one job of any nation in the world is to keep their citizens safe. Keep them safe. And me being former law enforcement, as you all know, you don't know, I'm retired from the state police. I know a little bit about safety and keeping people safe. And that's pretty much it for me. Our jobs, or your jobs in government, in local government, is to keep us safe. Thank you very much.
Next comments?
Jill Lohmeyer?
Hello, I'm Jill Lohmeyer. I'm a resident of East Norton Township and an avid volunteer at the Philadelphia Horticultural Society's Norristown Farm Park. And, I heard it again. This program is located about three acres of the Norristown Farm Park and provides fresh fruits and veggies to the tune of 40,000 pounds per year for our most needed residents for food pantries and educational nutritional programs. As I believe this board has acknowledged that food insecurity is a great problem in our area. Food banks and pantries face shrinking supplies and rising demands, especially with the federal government shrinking the SNAP program. It is my understanding that the county came to Pennsylvania Horticultural Society somewhere around 2020 and asked them for help in addressing the food insecurity problem. The county has been very supportive to date. The farm operations are quite extensive. There's a greenhouse, there's three hoop houses, there's wash stations, there's refrigerators, there's a distribution center, there's a whole army of volunteers. And this is an efficient and well-run farm, and it's instrumental in providing much-needed fresh produce to our most needy. It is my understanding that the operational budget for this program for 2026 has not been granted yet. I am here asking for your support to keep this program going. Thanks.
David Morgan?
David Ambler. I'm thankful that, when I mentioned in July or so about this publication from the county, Parent and Infant Resource Guide, which is also available in Spanish, that Commissioner DeBello, you mentioned that you were interested in this by indicating to your staff member, Kim Henderson. And so I'm thankful that we have it on the table again here and to let other people know about this resource. Thank you, Kim. We had a recognition for Becca Jurell last meeting, so I think our assistance to the commissioners should be commended. And so I want to thank you that you were alert to that. And this is wonderful because it helps people who are facing a pregnancy. And page one, when you open it, it talks about many centers or pregnancy resource centers for women expecting, and also page three. And top of page three is Matco Mamas, a county program. So a lot of these are privately funded, and so there's no taxpayer consequence, and yet they preserve lives for our youngest humans, those in womb, and also beyond that, for care, items of need, diapers, et cetera. Often, these groups help for five years, so up to elementary school age. So I'm just really thankful that this publication has been put out by the county. You always check that they are helping the infant, the unborn child, and the parent before you maybe go to them to find out what their records are. And I know many of them, I've toured some of them, so I'm just so glad that, Kim, that you made that effort to get with Commissioner DeBello's help that out there. So all the public can use these, you know, and my wife says, get the word out, especially kids. So I talk a lot of people about pregnancy resource centers, that people don't know about them, and they really see that they can support in so many ways for life. So thank you very much, and I like the trees across the street, that's very lively, too.
Any other comments?
Carby the Sailor?
Good morning. Good morning.
Morning.
Earlier this morning, I had a conversation with the executive director of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and his director of enforcement. And what I found out is that under the commission, they offer trainings for the community about the services that are provided to everyday Pennsylvanians. So I have a statewide coalition group, and I have submitted a request for the training to come to Montgomery County as part of a tour that I'm going to do to communities outside of Philadelphia, Harrisburg, and Pennsylvania. So I'm really asking to collaborate with you guys as commissioners to do a public service to the community residents in this county because I think it's a very good launching path before you roll out with your commission. So I am publicly asking you, someone, Mr. Fields, if you could return my call to work together with me and my organization to do this training of what the Human Relations Commission does and what it can do for residents. I think it's a very positive and proactive approach to educating people. And since it's free, I think it's a wonderful idea. And obviously, to start here and to go around the county, around the state would be a marvelous thing. So I will send you guys a follow-up email, but I wanted to let you know what I did and what I said earlier than this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Anybody online? Any hands raised online? Because I missed something last week, I don't want to get calls. Okay, just double checking.
We've had conversations on the immigration topic for many meetings, and I think we made our points clear. Thank you for reading that, Ed. It went through a process of editorial checks, and it's not hard to get to a trillion dollars because, I mean, it's 170 billion in this last federal budget, and that's only over the course of a few years. So any of the estimates suggested, and if someone wants to give us $250 million, I would absolutely not spend that on deporting people who live in Montgomery County and are working hard, abiding by the law, and have family members here who are citizens. So if I have any say over that, we're not going to be spending money removing people in our community.
And I would just say, every immigrant's journey to this country is different. And I think there are many people that are trying to follow, you know, the process to get their status, their legal status. And I don't know if some people are watching in terms of what ICE is doing, but what I saw, a couple miles down the road from my house, right, was not all ICE is trying to do. They were terrorizing a particular community, and they're targeting black and brown immigrants. You should see it with your own eyes, right? Let's stop the propaganda, right? Let's respect our friends and neighbors. There are people that are here, working, doing the right thing, that are trying to have a better life. We know there are criminals. There are a lot of criminals that are legal citizens. So I'm just tired of the rhetoric, right? ICE agents are terrorizing communities, masked ICE agents. And this narrative that we, as Democrats, don't support law enforcement, that's not real. My father worked in our criminal justice system for four decades as a warden in our state penitentiary system. You can do both. You can protect public safety and protect our friends and neighbors. So it's not that simple, but I'm just tired of the rhetoric. Go ahead.
Well, I'll also add to the person who brought up the crime issue, and that's, you know, the way this is sold politically, right? But if you talk to law enforcement, I talked to a member of chiefs recently, a week ago, they don't want to be associated with what ICE is doing right now. Because if they are seen with these masked federal agents, members of the community who see them on the street and trust them to report a crime no longer want to go to them because they think they will engage in the kind of activity that's happening. And they don't want to be associated with it. And there's municipalities all across the county that are making clear that they're not participating in the actions that this administration is engaging in. And just to, you know, put a further point on the distinction between legal and illegal, just last week, I think the president made an announcement, a proclamation, to change the rules around legal immigration process for the H1B process, which is something particularly in my community, the South Asian community, is very common as a way of coming to this country, right? They immediately essentially made it untenable for people to stay on those visas because they wanted to add a $100,000 fee per visa. And they first made an announcement in the Oval Office, then they changed it a couple hours later. There were people on planes trying to get off the plane on the runway because they didn't know whether they would be able to see their families again because their employer could pull the visa. What this administration is doing is terrorizing immigrant communities both, you know, and that includes legal immigrants, right? Those are people who came here legally, followed a process, and they're having the rug pulled out from underneath them.
I have not heard anybody come here legally, get pulled off the airplane.
Well, I'm telling you what's happening.
Illegal, if you're illegal.
This isn't a debate, this isn't a debate. I'm happy to talk to you further and take your comments.
Illegal, you've broken the law, you've ruined law already.
So, no, let me tell you why. Because there are people who are granted status by the government, and that status can be taken away, or at least is going to be attempted to be taken away through presidential fiat. It'll be, you know, debated in the courts, it'll be litigated. But it's not a clear question of what someone's status is at all times, and that's why we protect due process. And we comply with federal law enforcement if they have a signed word from the judge, which means that they had at least some process that went into considering whether a person can be detained or removed. And so, you know, that's our number one priority, is making sure everyone has process. Because what's happening at the executive level is chaos right now. They have not passed a single law on immigration, other than funding these detention centers, but they haven't actually changed the process. So anyway, this is where we are at the local level. We've already done, you know, what we're going to do on this topic, but, you know, I thank Nellie for all of her work in making sure of all the immigrant communities in a way that we can because, again, it's very easy to talk about people, add statistics, or this idea separate from the reality, which is there are members of our community who have been here for decades and decades, who are essential to everything that we do and the lives that we're living, and their family members are often citizens as well. So we're on that. We're going to have our election board meeting now, and then we'll have board meeting, but go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know where we're at here.
Yeah.
This is a board comment?
Sure. Yeah, this is a close-up.
Okay. The answer to your question about the program, if you're talking about the county funding of this for 2026, that's what we were talking about earlier. The budget hasn't been approved yet, so...
I'm just here to say, you really should.
Well, I don't disagree with you, and I appreciate you standing up. I just want to make sure that it's not being ignored, it's part of the 26 budget as well, right? So I just want, because I didn't want you to walk away like we're not funding it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and they said usually the funding goes through no family, but this year, like, we don't know.
Well, we don't know a lot right now, that's what we were talking about earlier, so...
Sure, that we're here, that there's a whole group of us volunteers, and there's a whole group of recipients that very appreciate this, but they're in the town, they're already something, so many wonderful resources.
Yeah.
So they have it up and running, and it's not difficult.
Yeah, so I appreciate, I appreciate you standing up and making your points. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, it's not a no, we're not there completely yet. Okay, good. Yeah, I know.
I will say, the Horticultural Society did get a Food Systems Grant just recently that we announced a couple weeks ago.
I saw it on your website.
Yeah.
So it's not in operation?
No, no, I get it, I get it. It's about infrastructure, and I've been to the farm, I've seen it. It's in my backyard, so I think my colleagues are going to try to get out to the farm. If you haven't already, you just see the work that's done. You all do a really, a really nice job there, so supplying a lot of fresh food to Montgomery County. So thank you for volunteering.
Any other comments? Sure.
So I started off earlier talking about, you know, a lot of different things. And we all have our own personal feelings as far as immigration, enforcement of immigration. But again, I think as leaders of the county, we all have our feelings, and I don't think we should be talking about law enforcement agencies terrorizing. I mean, because that's only adding on to the rhetoric. They, you know, and again, it's our feelings and what we may believe or may not.
That's what I've seen with my own eyes.
I understand that, but we...
So just, it's not, it's not feelings, it's what I've seen with my own eyes.
Right, well, and I talk about a lot of things that I've seen, too, and I don't classify it as terrorizing anyone. So again, we could have a debate, but more importantly, the community, we don't want... There's a lot of angst out there, I get it, as far as, you know, enforcement of laws that are on the books, that Congress, who's responsible for these laws, has been talking about this for well over 30 years. The last law changed to everything that we're talking about when it comes to... The last law changed, to everything that we're talking about when it comes to immigration, I believe was signed by President Clinton back in 96, was the Immigration Reform Act, which spelled out a lot of things that happened through the Obama administration, as well as the Bush and the Trump administration as well. So, I encourage everyone that if you don't like what's happening as far as what laws are being enforced, contact your congressperson because they're the ones that ultimately change the laws. And if the laws are changed, then the federal authorities will have to follow whatever those changed laws are. As county commissioners, we don't have the ability to change any of it. If we could, I'm sure that we could get to a resolution that would be maybe better than what we see today. I don't know. But we don't have that ability. The only other thing I want to mention is, I was able to participate in a press conference yesterday. I'm not going to make this, I don't want to make this political, it's not about political. But there is a program for counties and head start programs that, as the budget has not been approved yet, we're still waiting our legislative body. The House and the Senate has to go back, they have to work through this. But this program is available for counties, for services that they provide through that, that are kind of mandated through the state to, you know, to borrow money to help, from the, from the state, to help offset, they're, not offset, but to help them pay these programs until there's an approved budget. It's a good program, we'll see how it comes fruition. As Montgomery County has mentioned earlier, right now, what we have in our, in our reserve, we should be okay through the rest of this year, and then we'll get, we'll get the reimbursements once the state budget is approved. It does impact us slightly because the money that we use, that we have to take out of reserve we're not making interest on, and that interest that we make actually goes to our revenue model. So, it does impact us, but it's not going to impact us in a way that, as of right now, that's going to impact the programs that we're providing. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot more to come to that. But these programs will be available, but hopefully our state legislative body will get back to Harrisburg. Because as far as I'm, my understanding, neither, neither the House or the Senate is in session right now. And until they go into session, we're not going to have proposed budgets for approval. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Is that 4.5% interest, is that required?
Well, so, it is, it is a requirement. However, at C cap, the county commissioners threw a resolution, if you decided, whatever, but through a resolution proposing to the state legislative to waive interest payments that, or reimburse counties' interest payments that if they have to borrow money, it would be waived, or not, reimbursed, sorry. This program, legislators could waive that, it has to go to the House and the Senate. But for them to be able to do what they're doing, yes, it has, there has to be an interest imposed.
Yeah. Yeah, I would certainly much rather have a passive budget.
I've got to screen, I'm just saying that, that's where we're at right now.
Any other comments? All right, with that, we will motion, well, is there a motion to adjourn the 2024-2025 Montgomery County County Commissioners?
I don't know.
So, we move on. Salary Board after, is there a second? Yes, second by Commissioner Development, Commissioner Winder, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned. Moving straight into the Salary Board, is there any public comment? No public comment. Tony Brew, is that tasked with the Salary Board list? Tony, do you want to come up?
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated September 24, 2025, at a timestamp of 8:47 a.m. All of these have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the September 25? Salary Board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources officer.
I don't know.
Move by Commissioner Winder, is your second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart, any board comment?
The only comment I want to make on this is referring to what Kristen DeMorgan brought up earlier. Most of these positions, under new positions are paid through by grants.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn the September 25, 2025 meeting of Montgomery County Salary Board? Move by Commissioner Hello, sent by Commissioner Winder, any comments? All in favor? Aye, meeting is approved. All right, are we here for election board now? Called to over the September 25.
We can find it in file, we can...
We'll be quick. Two-minute break.
Two-minute break.
All right, two-minute break, we'll be back. All right, we will call to, call to order the September 25, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Elections. Please, I guess first let's know, are there any public comments? Any public comments? We're here for Frank Dean, our Director of Elections.
Good morning, Election Board. I'm here today for two purposes. The first is to provide an update on our preparations for the upcoming elections in November, as well as to request your approval for some polling location changes. Regarding our preparations, I'm happy to report that our ballot proofing is complete. Sample ballots are currently available on our website, and we anticipate giving our print vendor the go-ahead to start mailing mail ballots around the end of the day tomorrow. That would have them landing in the mailboxes approximately midweek next week. Logic and accuracy testing will begin on Monday at the Voters Warehouse, and we will conduct our public demonstration of our high-speed scanners that same day. Poll worker outreach is going very well. I'm happy to report we have over 390 judges confirmed, 1,500 total poll workers confirmed, and 88 student poll workers. We will also be emailing all the folks who usually help us out for the mail-in canvas, and hopefully getting a really good turnout with that. We're going to hold an additional training this year, just to replenish our pool of candidates to make sure that we wrap up the mail-in canvas timely. Mail-in voting, we have processed over 81,000 applications for mail-in ballots and currently do not have a backlog. So, if anyone is listening, never been a better time to apply for your mail-in ballot. They, at this point, will still go out in the first batch, and then the daily batches will mail thereafter. We will once again be offering satellite offices in Pottstown, Willow Grove, Lansdale, and Lower Marion. Those satellite offices will be open the two weekends prior to the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot. They will be open from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m., two offices each day, and then one Montgomery will be open seven days a week at that point. Some key dates for voters, October 20th is the deadline to register to vote, and October 28th is the deadline to request a mail-in ballot. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can we talk about the, look, uh...
Frederick.
What's that?
Upper Frederick.
Well, no, just in general, the poll location changes, if anyone is interested in those.
Certainly. We are going to request...
Lower Frederick.
Six polling location changes today. Two of them are returning to their original location, the Lower Frederick polling locations. We are moving those because the existing spaces are inadequate for the voters that vote there, as well as the poll workers. In one instance, I believe it's the fire company, have also requested that we find alternate accommodations. And so, in working with local committee folks and poll workers, we sourced the middle school, Perkeum Valley Middle School West, and we were able to consolidate both locations to that facility.
The ones that are going back to their original locations, you want to say, the...
Montgomery 4 and Upper Dublin 6-1, they are... Montgomery 4 is actually returning to the Village of Deschannaminy Fall Clubhouse, which the board may remember we had to move due to a fire. And the Upper Dublin 6-1 is returning to Temple Sinai Synagogue. It had originally moved because of some redistricting that we did, but we were able to move it back to that location.
And that's, that's four, is there two more?
Yes, Cheltenham 5-1 and Horsham 1-2. Cheltenham 5-1, or 5-1 is moving to Myers Elementary School, and Horsham 1-2 is moving to the Beaumont Baptist Church.
So, why, why are they...
Why, why are those two? In the case of Cheltenham 5-1, that was requested by the current location that we find alternate accommodations.
Was that because of you, or...
Yes, who can, who can tell? Horsham 1-2 is moving because the middle school can't accommodate more than two precincts.
Pardon me?
Can't accommodate more than two precincts, there's already two scheduled to be there, so we had to find an alternate location.
So, then, the other two, the Lower Frederick, one was, one was at the firehouse, and then the firehouse actually asked to move to a different, because, I mean, that, they've been there for a long time.
Long time, yes.
And then like all of a sudden, now it's...
About last December, we were contacted by some local committee folks, Erna Schmidt comes to mind, and they asked us to start looking into alternate accommodations. Initially, we were going to move that to the municipal building and find alternate accommodations for Lower Frederick 2. But in discussing it with the municipality and looking at our available options, we realized that the middle school was kind of a two birds with one stone situation. It's a great facility, it has tons of parking, it's ADA accessible, and we believe it will better serve the voters in that area.
So, neither location was at the middle school before?
Neither was at the middle school.
Right. And then obviously, we're going to send out postcards and all that?
Yes, sir. If the vote is approved today, we are prepared to mail the new voter ID cards tomorrow.
I think when we're, when we're going to move poll locations, just my opinion, when we're going to move poll locations like that for those type reasons, I think we should do it in the primary, and then have the election process for the year. Like, I look at the election season starting in the primary, right? And then, you know, we go throughout the year, and then the next season starts, or cycle, whatever you want to call it, is the primary. So, I think that in the future, I would recommend that when we're moving poll locations for, you know, for reasons like that, that we try to do it pre-primary, so that it's, it's pretty here.
Same for both elections.
So that, because you're kind of doing it in the middle of the election cycle, which that could add to confusion, and we could add to a lot of other speculations or hyperbole, or whatever you want to call it, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So, we kind of could avoid certain things by just in the primary, right before, we move before the primary, it has less of an impact if we're doing it in the middle of the election cycle. And I should, I mean, that's just my opinion, I mean...
Yeah, well, my question, I mean, I did hear about this from some people, and, I mean, how do you explain the urgency of doing this now versus in, you know, next year, before the next election?
It's not a matter of urgency, it was just a, we work on these things as they get presented to us, and when we're able to actually nail down the new locations.
Yeah.
This was something we started working on in the offseason after the general last year. We weren't able to get a new, new location nailed down before the primary.
Yeah.
Since then, the ball moved, I will admit, much faster than we typically see to move a location. And so, we thought we would move sooner to accommodate those voters sooner.
Yeah. Yeah. What, what would be your standard process for notification? I mean, I know you send out the postcards and when do you send those out in terms of? Is it from the day, for example, we vote on changing a location or is it 30 days out from the election or what's the timeline?
As soon as any polling location is changed, we press print on the voter ID cards and start mailing them out the next day. We also post the existing location to let people in the area know and we post it on election day so that if anyone were to go to the firehouse on election day, they would be directed to the middle school.
Do you know, how far apart are they?
I do not off the top of my head.
Lower Frederick, a few miles.
The middle school, just a few, few miles.
Yeah, because I don't, I'm not sure how the middle, how the school falls into like centralized for both locations. If it's the school I'm thinking of.
I, I do not have that information in hand, but I'm happy to look it up and follow up with you.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, if it's the school I'm thinking of, I, I don't think it's like kind of.
Central.
Yeah. And I, I, again, I mean, I, I just kind of struggle with the fact that it's, it's, we're talking about poll locations. I've been there for probably 30 years and, you know, I, I would prefer not to do it and as we're going into the general election, you know, it's out there that we're, we're going to do it. I would, I'd prefer to do it primary next year.
It's a five-minute drive.
What's that?
It's a five-minute drive. Just the, the distance.
I mean, right.
How many, how many people are you going to get notified?
Uh, I believe, I have, I do not have that data in front of me of how many currently registered voters there are in Lower Frederick.
So you'd be able to send it out, how, how soon?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And, and so they'd get it at least 30 days.
There's been.
Is there anything else that we can do beyond that?
I've also spoken with the township manager of Lower Frederick and asked if they wouldn't mind echoing the move and if we can partner with them to create any type of social media campaign to better spread the word, to reduce any type of confusion.
Yeah. I think if we change, we probably would want it out there 30 days beforehand anyway.
I, I'm sorry, sir.
I think if we change any location, probably would want to notify people 30 days beforehand as opposed to if we changed it two months ago.
Yes.
They're going to need a reminder anyway if it's been there that long. But yeah, you know, I think, thinking in general, I don't know if there needs to be a hard rule because you have to change polling places sometimes in the middle of the year because of.
There is a quiet period, 20 days before the election, we're not allowed to make any moves unless it's an emergency, which is the case with the.
That was at the.
The Village of Neshanam.
Village, right. That was, that was like 10 days, right?
It was very close.
Got it.
I remember when we had, we have to have like an emergency meeting or something to prove that?
I think you may be right.
Yeah, I think we had to pull together the approval because it was in that window.
Yes.
I'm sorry, so the fire company doesn't want the poll devoting there?
They agree that we've outgrown the space and it's, it's one of those things that's technically ADA accessible, but kind of in the spirit of the law rather than the hard facts of it.
Okay, that's helpful. All right, any thing else?
Related to that or just in general?
Just for the rest of his comments, I guess. For the rest of his comments, if he had anything.
The only thing I, I, you know, one of the things that we did last year, or we tried to do last year is kind of put together a, a schedule or a calendar of how the, you know, I, I really would like, you know, as we're preparing for each election, like we have a plan that's published, you know, or at least given to the commissioners or whoever so that we know when stuff is hopefully going to start. I mean, I know, I get it that you lay out a schedule and then things happen or things change and then, you know, changes, but I'd still like to see, you know, if possible. I don't remember anything being sent to us like here's the, here's the sequence of events of when they're going to be starting and all that.
I could definitely put something like that together.
Well, I'm just saying, so we, yeah, so we, I have an idea, you know, when things are going to be starting.
True.
Because I kind of like don't know, you know, and if people ask me, I don't like to say I don't know. I don't like to call you, you know, all the time and say, Frank, when are you starting this?
Frank, you added the all the time and just leave it as I don't like to call you.
So, no, so I think it would be good, you know.
I will absolutely put that together and provide.
I mean, you know, you probably have it internally, right?
I mean, it's like it's X number of days before the election, it's X number of days after the election, there's.
I could put together a schedule of, you know, when things are going to start to develop.
All right, so we can move to the authorization. I, yeah, I, I support it, especially I think it's important for us to explain to people that, you know, the ADA accommodations are, you know, more, it's just more accessible at the new location. And so we should make sure we put that out there and the day of, sounds like you'll have adequate staffing to redirect people if they show up at the wrong place.
Yes.
Yeah, that's important. All right, so is there a motion to approve the relocation of the six polling locations listed on the attached document titled 2025 Municipal Election Polling Location Changes? Moved by Commissioner Winder, is there a second? All second, any board comment?
I think I'm, I'm, I'm not going to support it this time. I, I, I personally think that we should do it in the beginning of the election cycle.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I think 30 days is plenty of time. Or how many days out are we? Forty-nine.
Forty-one days?
Right, forty-one days. So, yeah, let's get those notices out ASAP. Great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed or no motion passes? Any closing comments?
What's a, do we have a projection real quick to what we think voter turnout is going to be? Based on, I mean, I don't know if you could project off of where we are mailing ballot requests to date?
Mail-in ballots are mirroring the numbers that we saw approximately two years ago. Yeah. So we have 81,000 approved thus far. We think, I think in '23 we capped around 91,000. So I, I think we're on, on track to a little bit less, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sounds good. We're good then. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn the September 25 meeting of the Montgomery County Election Board? Moved by Commissioner Bello, any second? Sent by Commissioner Winder, any more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the meeting is adjourned.